Now call the meeting to order. From this, from today onwards, we are going to have twenty-one sessions of special meeting to scrutinize the estimates so as to make sure that the expenditure that would not be more than necessary to discharge the relevant policy portfolio and measures. Now for each session, we are going to invite the relevant secretary to give us an opening address and then we ask members to raise questions. So members, as far as possible, please stay in your designated seats. Some six thousand written questions have been raised by members. The government has promised to give replies to the first three thousand three hundred and the other will be covered by the fifth of May. So depending on the number of members who like to raise questions, I may reserve some time for a second round. All questions raised must be directly related to the estimates. And if you want to refer to a particular question, please refer to the question number on the top right-hand corner such as CSP 0001. And if you have written a question to follow up, please do this by the close of this meeting and they will respond to your questions by the second of May. So over to the secretary for the civil service. Thank you. Chairman and honourable members, among the matters related to civil service in the 2018-2019 draft estimates of expenditure, I would like to focus on my introduction on two items. The first item is civil service establishment. In order to support the implementation of policies, initiatives and new measures of government or the new term and to ease the work pressure on civil servants, the civil service establishment is expected to expand by six thousand seven hundred posts in 2018-19. This represents a year-on-year increase of about 3.7 percent, the highest since reunification. For night staff, we account for about seventy percent of the additional manpower, subject to the approval of the draft estimates of expenditure by the Legislative Council. The civil service establishment expand, is expected to stand at one thousand eight hundred eighty-eight thousand four hundred fifty-one posts by the end of March 2019. The establishment of the vast majority of bureaus and departments will be augmented in 2018-19. The additional staff will serve in different areas of work, mainly in land and housing development, development of livable city, poverty alleviation, elderly care, support for the disadvantaged, promotion of primary healthcare, supporting the upcoming commissioning of major infrastructure projects such as a number of boundary control points, et cetera. In addition, to mitigate the impact of time-limited posts on the relevant grades and civil servants, after comprehensive review of these posts, the government would make permanent some four hundred time-limited posts and extend about five hundred and ninety posts in 2018 to 2019. These posts can be used for promotion or substantively few by civil servants, thus providing more career development opportunities, the appropriate increase in manpower resources by the government represent not only a boost staff for the civil service in appreciation of challenges encountered by departments, bureaus and departments in taking forward new initiatives, but more importantly, it could enhance the quality of public service. The second item of my introduction is about financial provisions. In the 2018-19 draft estimates of expenditure, there's financial provisions under a few heads of expenditure related to the policy area of management of the civil service. They include A, Head 37, Department of Health, Programme 7, medical and dental treatment for civil servants. A financial provision of one point eight four eight nine billion dollars is proposed, representing an increase of two hundred ninety-eight point two million dollars or nineteen point two percent over the 2017-18 revised estimate. The increase is mainly for enhancing the medical and dental benefits for serving civil servants, pensioners and eligible dependents, and continuously improving various services. Of this provision, nine hundred fifty-three point seven million dollars is for providing medical and dental services, a families clinic and government dental clinics, and eight hundred ninety-five point two million dollars for the payment and reimbursement of medical fees and hospital charges. And B, Head 120, pensions, Programme 1, public and judicial service pension benefits. An amount of thirty-six point six five three four billion dollars is proposed for pension payments to retirees, representing an increase of three point oh oh two five billion dollars over the 2017-18 revised estimates. The increase is mainly due to an estimated increase in the number of new retirees and the full year effect of pension payments to those retiring in 2017-18. Chairman, this is the end of my introduction. I will welcome questions from members. Yes, I would try to reserve some time for the second round. So members, everyone is given four minutes. Mr. Jeremy Tam.
I have a question about the Civil Service College. Many members have asked questions about this facility, this college, but there's no timetable given in the reply and no manpower mentioned. Mr. It's CSP 018. It's expect, the question is about the expected increase in manpower and establishment and no answer has been given. And then there is another question about whether the qualifications so gained at the college will be recognized in the qualification framework and that is CSP 012. And there are questions about the timetable related to this college and all you have, you can say is that there will be studies without any information, concrete information. Don't you find this a bit of a problem here? This work on the Civil Service College is at an early planning stage. What we need to do now is to identify a site for the construction of the college. Well, there are some ballpark parameters, but we have to make further progress before we can come up with the timetable and the manpower requirement. This Civil Service College will only be completed beyond the term of the current government. We'll have to decide on the provisions when the time comes. Well, you have to plan ahead. You cannot say that this is the site and the size of the site that I've got. I would provide so many people to work there. If the Education Bureau is to submit an application for school projects, they will tell us how many teachers will be required and what kind of training programs we provide. Can you, can, you are going to use the entire loop area for the college. You must have some objective on the size, the size of the site that will be needed and the number of classrooms have not been, also not mentioned in the reply. We are still in the planning stage. We are not here submitting an application to use a particular site for the college. When we have a mature proposal to submit to this council, of course, in the application we will sell our information on the proposals, the size of the site and other information. But we haven't reached that stage or that's why we can only tell members so much. As for the questions referred to by Mrs. Regina Yip's question on qualifications framework, we have heard views from colleagues in the civil service that if some of the programs can gain the recognition in the, under the qualification framework, that would certainly help. Some of these training programs in the civil service, for example, those run by the Police College are recognized for the QF practices. When can you formulate all these issues? When can you come to a decision? We'll do it as quickly as we can. Mr. Kun Chiu-Peng. It's the reply number 039. That is to say that the number of civil service on the maximum point of the pay scale. You say that two thousand one hundred and seven for those with ten years or more service, amid those rent twenty-one thousand and junior four thousand. And there will be one hundred eighty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty-one posts in the establishment, so this fifteen percent. So they will only be get annual salary adjustment without any getting benefited from the increment. Actually, in the salary adjustments, the expenditure on the increment cost will be deducted. So if the deduction for increment is not followed, what is the additional expenditure in salary adjustment? So secondly, it's a reply 041, it's about five-day week. Last week, when we had a meeting, the bureau said that it would not implement a five-day week for individual grades. There will be a review in two years' time. So the review is about to start and still some twenty-nine or twenty-seven percent of civil servants are not covered by the five-day work system. Would you adjust the so-called three noes principle? And if that's the case, what's the additional resources required for these twenty-five, twenty-seven percent of civil servants to be covered by the five-day, five-day week system? Have you estimated additional costs? Another zero five nine, the bureau says that in the lump sum grant to the HA, it's about four point eight billion dollars. And I want to know that it's in 2018, 2018, there's a dedicated to grant of eighty-seven Can the eighty-seven billion be subsumed in the lump sum grant of four point eight billion dollars so that we can tell clearly what's the cost of medical benefits for civil servants? Secretary, I do my best here on salary adjustment under the existing mechanism. The consideration of increment is part of the existing mechanism. Our understanding commissions works out the relevant increase in the private sector. There will be a deduction made in respect of civil service pay increment. That is in relation to the bonus element in the private sector.
I am not going to elaborate on that. In relation to five days, five-day week, last time I have already clearly explained that there are about twenty-seven percent of civil servants who are not covered by the five-day week. We will endeavor to put in place pilot schemes. In our view, any relaxation of the full requirements is difficult at this moment in time. Last question, in relation to medical expenses, the lump sum allocation covers civil servant clinics, dental service, sorry, not dental service, just the families clinic. Dedicated services for civil servants under the hospital authority is of a separate subhead. This year, we have additionally provided specialist dental and also radiology services or imagery services. I don't know why I have favored Mr. Pun Chiu-Ping. If you've only left dozens of seconds to government officials, I will simply cut the reply of the government official short. So you will have to earmark time for a reply. Mr. Shiu Kafai, four minutes.
On top of legislature, I've been a district councillor for eleven years. I have come across different government departments. I realize that they are working very hard because of manpower shortage. Say for example, for district offices, well, I have to keep chasing them to get things done. Say for example, leakage, there are tens of thousands of cases backlog with the ASD. So there is a manpower shortage. There will be an increase of manpower by three point seven percent. Will you adjust it upwards? Because very often I hear that eight, nine, ten P M. they will have to call me. I didn't want to lose my temper for taking those calls because it was so late because they are still working. They have a lot, they have a lot of responsibilities you need to give them support. Departments should be responsible for staff, their own staff management. Has the CSP communicated with departments? Say for example, by questionnaire to ask about their work environment, whether there is manpower shortage and the number of work hours. Not to complain, but whether there is a communication channel that will directly put the CSP into contact with departments. The CSP is in close contact with departments. Since I have taken office, I regularly visit different departments. I've been to a dozen or so. It's a very important part of my visit that I talk to frontline civil servants face-to-face so that they have a chance to express their views. Say for example, the difficulties they encounter in their line of work. Mr. Shiu, I thank you for being so understanding about pressure faced by civil servants. So are there any questionnaire surveys with frontline officers? No. I know the secretary, you go to different departments regularly to talk to them. Senior management, those in the middle management as well as elementary workers will talk to you, but there are over hundred and eighty thousand civil servants. Would you consider questionnaire surveys, whether it is done anonymously or not? They will reflect you the work situation and then you can talk to departments to tell them that they need to increase manpower. I do believe that, well, department directors, it will be very willing to make good use of resources, but not at the expense of their staff. So I ask you to care more about the feelings of frontline officers. A few weeks ago, there was the suggestion that civil servants should be given the option to have their retirement age postponed. But you need to keep in mind promotion prospects. Say for example, you will create more posts for promotion. Thank you. Next, Mr. Wu Jiuyi. In paragraph four of your opening remark, he said that when it comes to time-limited posts for 2018-19, as some of them will be turned into permanent posts. I would like to talk about NCSC. There are about ten thousand or so non-contract civil service staff. You say that there will be a new civil service post for application. I would like to ask, in relation to NCSC staff and the posts they occupy, how many of them, how many of these posts will see recruitment exercise for permanent posts? That is in relation to the non-civil service contract staff, NCSC. There are about, there are about a ten thousand or so NCSC staff members. Well, two hundred and seventy-eight newly created posts, of the newly created posts will be perm, will be civil service posts. When the NCSC posts are replaced, we don't have figures as to how these posts will be I see that when these posts are set within departments, there is no comparable civil service posts. Perhaps the CSP doesn't even know about the situation. What we see is that a lot of NCSC staff are in the same post for ten years or more. This is greatly unreasonable and it's not appropriate. How can departments use NCSC to plug the gap of manpower shortage on a long term? So will you conduct a comprehensive review? In the past decade or so, we have been doing our work. In two thousand six, there are, there were about eighteen thousand seven hundred NCSC. Well, that was the peak. Now it stands at ten thousand three hundred, a drop by about forty-four percent. About eight thousand posts have been replaced by civil service posts. We'll continue our work. Replacement, what do you mean? There is a counterpart of the civil ser, a counterpart post in the civil service or you simply, you have simply deleted that NCSC post? They are replaced by new posts, by new post holders. If there is a need for departments to recruit more staff to fill these posts, well, NCSC staff can apply for these posts. There has been successful cases. Sorry, your time's up. We have nine members, so we have thirty-six minutes, which will bring us to the end of this session. There won't be any second rounds? No. Mr. Ko Wai-kung. Thank you.
Well, for medical services, psychological services, dental, as well as such, traditional Chinese medicine, well, because of restrictions, four thousand people or so can't have five-day work. There needs to be some kind of review. So for the three basic principles, don't you think they are unreasonable and unfair to the four thousand staff members? For paternity leave, well, review has been completed after three years and it's going to be increased from three to five. In 2014, it was set at five days and there is so far no review. When will the review take place? And I asked about the Civil Service College. Secretary told me about land, that they have to first deal with land shortage. Well, Civil Service College should be comprehensive and should be systematic. You should not just get bogged down by trying to find land. And I would like to ask a question in, for, on reply sixteen. That is, how many people continue to serve in the civil service after retirement, under the post-retirement service contract? I see that for the water supplies department, then the customs and exercise department as well as CSD, there are quite a large number of such staff members. Is it because of an acute manpower shortage, difficulties in recruitment, remuneration not being appealing enough to attract candidates or what? In relation to five-day week, we focus, it's not the case that we are being unfair to those who are not covered by the five-day week because this is not a term of employment. It is a family-friendly policy. Starting from ten years ago, it started at low percentage and now it's about seventy percent or so. We will continue to put in place pilot schemes. We have to be very careful when it comes to striking a balance. If we increase manpower, increase resources without improving public service quality, it would be very difficult to convince the public that they can be turned, these posts can be turned into five-day week. Paternity leave, we have always been taking the lead. Policy bureau, well, after this year, you will be lagging behind. We do not intend to be left behind. We have regular reviews on paternity leave. Civil Service College, I did not have time to explain. I only had time to talk about land. Thank you for the opportunity for further explanation. When it comes to enhancing the capability of civil servants, before the completion of the college, we can increase number of courses. For example, local courses, courses with external collaborators and national studies on the mainland. For the post-retirement service contract scheme, departments will take into account their own situation. It's difficult to pinpoint a certain reason for a large number of such staff under the scheme. I would like to ask about sixty and sixty-one in relation to eligible civil servant, civil service eligible persons and the long waiting time. In a public service panel, we have talked about this many times. I have a lot of cases, dozens of pages of their suggestions. Well, the reply given to us by the administration is rather disappointing.
On public, private as partnership, the discipline services have made some suggestions and also taking out insurance in the market. We are not asking the government to change completely your policy, the policies. But you are saying that you do not like, want to consider these proposals. This is disappointing. Why don't you carry out a study before you respond instead of giving us a point-blank refusal? TCM, Traditional Chinese Medicine, is the subject of a study of the relevant policy bureau, especially in relation to the direction of development for the future Chinese medicine hospital in Chongguanou. And we'll see whether there's any room to provide TCM service to civil servants. We're paying close attention to the development and it's not that we are refusing to consider the various... it's not that we are refusing to consider the various proposals and just sit sit on our hands. Some civil service, some civil service have proposed the offering of private sector insurance. This will represent a major change of policy. Under the civil service regulations, the service will be provided by public sector organizations, i.e. the hospital authority and the Department of Health. If the services provided through alternative means, for example, taking out insurance coverage for civil servants, that would represent a major change in policy, and the financial implications is, would be difficult to assess. Yeah, that would represent a very major change of your policy and a major move. But you have to understand that the waiting time for civil servants and other patients for such services in the HA and specialist clinics are, is very long. So it would be good if civil servants can be channeled to the private sector through insurance coverage, and then everyone's waiting time will be shortened, and that will be welcomed by civil servants. Ms. Yong's opinion is noted. We have been improving continuously this service in the field of specialist clinic and dental service and hospital service. And we have, we have been able to shorten the waiting time for dental service, and this is certainly something that we should endeavor to do, to do more. I want to refer to CSP O three-two. My question is about the civil service establishment. The proposed increase this year is about three point seven percent for the, and I want to know more about the relevant situation with works department, engineering departments, and the professional to be employed. So the increase is seven point nine percent, which is higher than the overall average. Because we have learned that from the relevant officers of the relevant grades in the works department have complained about heavy workload. So I welcome the improvement in manpower. Since we have got a table on these departments, although you have already given the reply in respect of the buildings department in another answer, please include buildings department in this overall table they provided in the reply. And for the WS, Waters Supplies Department, the increase is on the low side, three percent. Because we are very concerned about water quality assurance, the provision of quality portable water, there are major projects to be launched. So why is it that the manpower is only going to go up by just three percent? As for professional grades, there's a problem with succession. We should put in place a training scheme to train professional officers such as engineers, so that they can progress and their professionalism can be enhanced, and their job, their service can meet public demand. I would like to know what innovations there will be in the relevant arrangements and systems. But this question is about Works Department. So the buildings department is not included in the table. I can inform members that in the coming year, there will be one hundred and twenty-five new posts in the BD, an increase of six point eight percent, one hundred and twenty-five new posts. Mainly, they are involved in improving building safety, processing the building plans and projects, and also the implementation of the third runway project. These are new posts. So structural engineers will be covered by the figure, I suppose. So please, just include this department in the table to make it complete. For Waters Surprise Department, there will be also an increase. It's not that we would increase the establishment of every department by three percent plus. This is done on a, on a need basis. Succession plan. I was asking about succession. You are recruiting the new graduates so that they can become fully qualified engineers in due course. So I was, I asked a question about succession. On the question of training, the works department have all got their own training programs for newly recruited engineers, so that after a few years, they were able to take all the necessary professional examinations. Mr. Tony Cheer, support increasing the manpower in the civil service to cope with the workload and the higher expectation of the community. I want to follow up to CSP O O six, question raised by Mr. Hau Kai Ming. Some six thousand, six, six thousand seven hundred posts will be added to the establishment. So we're talking about so many new posts, and you need to spend a lot of time in recruitment. And also, what's, how, how do you come up with the estimate for the expenditure? Suppose in the coming financial year, in this financial year, they are all recruited. How are you going to provide the expenditure? When the new post is approved, we reserve half a year of resources required for that post. And after the recruitment is done, we would then try to confirm whether the half-year provision will be sufficient and make necessary provisions. We'd like to see the recruitment process expedited, but it's always, it always certain processing time. Do you have any guideline on the time expended for recruitment? And it said that for two hundred and seventy or so would be used to replace NCSC positions. Do you have to wait until the NCSC contracts have ended before you can embark on, or you can allow the new recruits to report duty? Are all these two hundred and seventy-eight NCSC posts going to have the contracts expire in the current financial year? The usual recruitment exercise would take about six months. Some ninety percent of departments are able to complete the recruitment exercise within a year. It's difficult to devise a deadline for all the departments because they are facing different circumstances. I understand the departments all want to do that quickly, as quickly as they can. In the past, when we increased manpower in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, or to twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, there's a fifty percent of recruitment exercises. The processing time has not increased correspondingly. So you can see that we can still, broadly speaking, complete a recruitment exercise within six months or within a year. So our recruitment is done very efficiently. There are individual cases or for both individual grades and posts. They may or may not be able to replace NCSC staff with newly recruited staff. We do not require that the recruitment exercise can only commence after the expiry of the NCSC staff. I want to refer to CSP O O four. According to the reply, in the past three years, national study training programs involve annually eighteen point three million dollars in expenditure. This year, it goes up to twenty-three to point seven million dollars, or thirty percent increase. So with this drastic increase in expenditure, where, where, where do you spend the additional money? And also, what is the mode of instruction of these training programs? Do we have people from the mainland to provide instruction and training? Are you going to arrange the civil servants to go to the mainland to join these programs? What's the assessment of the participants of such training program so far? There are a number of items for the new financial year. We're going to increase the number of places for middle rank civil service, the number of training programs, the number of participants will be, will go up from the two hundred and seventy, we're gradually, two hundred and eighty will gradually increase it to four hundred and twenty places. And we're also going to extend the coverage to civil service on MPS point twenty-eight to thirty-three. We are going to provide national studies training programs to them. So the number of participants would gradually go up to two hundred and forty. And there will also be local basic law programs for civil servants. These are local programs. Gradually, we would offer the program to the the number of participants would go up from eight thousand nine hundred to twelve thousand gradually. So there will be programs requiring attendance on the mainland. We will arrange with the mainland training institutions to provide the necessary training to civil servants, and that the programs would cover both classrooms, training, and also visits to various places on the mainland so that they can learn from those places, the national developments, and and local characteristics. It's expected that there will be eight thousand one hundred and eighty participants in twenty nineteen instead of eight thousand in twenty eighteen. And for new, the new basic law programs, one seventy thousand six hundred participants would be covered. And in twenty nineteen, the number will go up to twenty thousand one hundred and eighty. So you are just talking about ten thousand odd. It's still a small fraction of the civil service.
Will you increase the number of places for civil servants so that they will learn about mainland affairs? We will continue to increase number of places. These are special courses where trainees will have to leave Hong Kong for a number of days. There are also some national studies courses, that is, one day or half a day. Every year, tens of thousands of civil servants attend, attend them. Ms. Elizabeth Quat. I would like to follow up on zero one five, that is, in relation to the CSR of Discipline Services. We have been talking to the administration that the last CSR took place ten years ago. And, well, the working environment and the situation have changed. It seems that the administration is reluctant to conduct another GSR, Grey Structure Review. Would they consider how often Grey Structure Review will be conducted? Because currently is one review every six years. Well, with private-public participation, you will be able to resolve long waiting time for discipline, for staff under discipline services to receive medical services. So would you consider using, say for example, purchase of private healthcare policies to alleviate the pressure faced by public, by the public sector? I would like to ask also about retirement age. Well, because of the difference in retirement age for those employed before two thousand and those after, well, we see that for disciplined services, we would like to retain those with experience to continue to serve. So would you not, why don't you align the retirement age for Grey Structure Review, GSR? We say that we will, we will actively follow it up and look into it. This involves a very complicated issues. We need time. So far, I'm afraid that we don't have a timetable to give, Ms. Quat. But we will do it as soon as possible. Well, when it comes to dental services, medical services, just like other civil servants, when we increase resources and manpower to shorten waiting time for civil servants, that includes discipline services. I think what the member is concerned about is injuries suffered in the course of work. We have been talking to staff unions. So far, about a dozen or so public clinics that they can use if they are injured in the line of work. We do hope that these clinics will play a bigger role. There aren't many cases of medical consultation sought resulting from injuries suffered from work. For private-public partnership, well, when it comes to buying policies, it involves resources and also a change of policy. For those that are employed after two thousand, we don't see justification to extend the retirement age to those employed before two thousand. There are still three members. I've already drawn a line, Kenny Floy, En Chang, and Yip Kin Yun. Mr. Kenny Floy, thank you. I would like to ask about the professional grades, age. In Public Accounts Committee as well as panel meetings, I've asked similar questions. I see that for a number of grades, say, government flying service, the pilots, traffic control, um, air traffic controllers of the Civil Aviation Department, as well as assessment officers of the IRD, they have to undergo long-time training. I see that in recent years, there has been a high wage stage. Say, for example, for government flying service, pilots might have switched to work in the private sector because they are work in the private sector because they are paid better, much better. So with this high wage stage, what action will the CSP take? I know that the Financial Secretary this year has given a certain percentage envelope for departments to use flexibly. With increased in resources, can it be used to change the pay structure or the remuneration? Thank you, Mr. Loang. Let me first answer question two. When it comes to increase in the amount in the envelope, it cannot be used on remuneration adjustment. Because pay and benefits corresponds to the the grade and rank an officer is in. The increased amount in the envelope is to give more room for departments to use to provide services. In relation to professional grades, Mr. Loang mentioned about the government flying service. We are concerned about the issue. We have been in contact with the Security Bureau to see how, in terms of policies, human resources management to resolve the problem. One of the solution is just like what Ms. Quat said when she asked about disciplined services. GFS is also part of the disciplined service, so it's related to GSR, grade structure review. We will talk to the management as well at the staff sites to get a better understanding of the situation. Is it the case that we have to increase the level of pay so that it will be comparable to the counterparts in the private sector for the problem to be solved? I don't want to jump to conclusions. Can you tell us, Secretary? Well, for the GSR of government flying service, well, what stage are you at? We haven't done the GSR yet. We're talking to the management side as well as the Policy Bureau to find solutions. Say for some departments, by increasing manpower, we can resolve the problem. Whereas for others, we can increase allowances. There are also some departments when we can make use of staff deployment, adjustment of shifts and other ways to solve the problem. Ms. An Chang, thank you. First, I'd like to ask about number five. In relation to medical attention of civil servants. You said that for twenty fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen and seventeen, eighteen, the total number of attendances has been increasing. I have heard from some civil servants that they have to wait for a very long time when they seek medical attention. Will you consider increase the number of quotas for general outpatient consultation? Under the Hospital Authority, the seventy-three general outpatient clinics, sixty-five of them provide priority discs for serving civil servants during normal day sessions. In relation to priority discs and the number of attendants, it's about three hundred thousand, which accounts for about sixty-five percent of total number of priority discs. So it's not exhausted. For some clinics where it's a prime location or closer to where civil servants work, the utilization rate may be higher than others, but it's currently at sixty-five percent. If we give more priority discs to civil servants, that means there will be a reduction of quotas for other, for members of the public. Well, perhaps you can look into places where there are a lot of civil servants working. They don't want to take, take sick leave to go see a doctor. Would you consider increasing number of priority discs? And I see that, well, there is an increase of eleven point three percent when it comes to civil service training. That's a good thing because a lot of civil servants would like to have more training opportunities. Well, are there any plans with the increase in, in the resources? The increase in resources covers different areas. First, national affairs, I have already explained in detail in reply to another question. Well, for middle grade civil servants, there are more opportunities, also an increase in number of basic law courses. There are also management courses, language courses, leadership courses, you, you will see an increase. We have increased manpower in the CSTDI for arrangements to be made to, for civil servants to attend national studies courses on the mainland. Mr. Ip Kin Yun, last member. For NCSC staff, well, Education Bureau employs a lot of them. So I would like to ask something in relation to answer nineteen. In NXB, you will see that for, with five years to less than ten years of continuous service, a hundred and thirty-seven of them are working in the Education Bureau is one of the highest three, there is the Department of Health Education Bureau as well as the EMSD with the highest number of NCSC staff working between five and ten years. So how many of these posts are from government schools? How come so far they have not been converted to civil service post? And in NX three, NX C, in the Education Bureau for NCSC staff that has been occupying the same post for ten years and more, there are a hundred and fifty-eight of them, one of the top five departments. How come that the same person has to occupy the same NCSC post for such a long time? And what are these posts?
And lastly, I have to ask a question arising from an earlier question I put to the government on the twenty-fifth of January. And that is NCSC staff and NCSC post and conversion to permanent post and the progress for twenty eighteen, twenty sixteen to twenty eighteen. In twenty nine, government secondary schools, there were turned fifty-two, the teaching post converted to permanent ones. And the total number of NCSC staff employed by the Education Bureau is on the rise in the same year. So what are the concrete measures that you can adopt to convert the NCSC teaching post in government schools to permanent ones? And in the coming year, there will be a three percent increase in establishment. Would some of the posts be used to, to take on these NCSC staff within the portfolio of the Education Bureau? Thank you, Mr. Yiv, for your question. The questions are related to the Education Bureau and also how NCSC staff is employed and arrangements. Please, I think I should ask you to raise the same questions in the session for Education Bureau. We encourage government departments and bureaus to consider turning NCSCs, a post which have been in existence for more than five years to permanent post. But as for problems faced by individual departments and bureaus, I think the relevant bureaus and departments should respond. It would be more appropriate for them to respond. For the Education Bureau, this year, twelve posts will be created in the bureau to, for the purpose of replacing NCSC staff. There's another question about three percent increase in establishment. Whether the post created, newly created can be used to replace NCSC posts? As I've said, twelve of them will be for, will be created for that purpose. This is the conclusion of the current session. We're going to start at three fifteen for the next session.